Call the meeting to order and please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for joining us tonight on such a wonderful weather day, hopefully the first of many. And we have recognitions and I'm to turn it over to Sandy Kovac.
Thank you so much and I'm going to ask Deanna to come on up, Deanna Whitwell. And if this gal looks familiar, it is because she was here just a year ago where she earned the President's Volunteer Service Award. And this amazing young woman is back this evening to be recognized not just for one, but for two additional awards. So first is called the Coca-Cola Scholar. And in the letter it says, "Deanna has been named a 2015 Coca-Cola Scholar. She is one of 150 students who were determined to best exemplify superior leadership and dedication to their community from a pool of nearly 103,000 applicants from across the country." 150 out of 103,000. Each Coca-Cola Scholar will receive a $20,000 scholarship to the college or university of their choice. And I'll let her tell you about where she's going to be going, you know, next week, right? Next weekend. And then the other one is, it's my pleasure to inform you that she's been selected as a 2015 Herb Cole Excellence Scholarship recipient. And so she was chosen to receive a $3,000 award because of her exceptional scholarship, leadership, citizenship, and schooling, community involvement. She's one of our rock stars, there's no way around it. So Deanna, if you want to talk a little bit about, I know you did something with Herb Cole already and then what's happening next weekend?
Well, because of amazing support from high school staff and as well as EP Rock staff and all the youth organizations and opportunities through Youth Action Hudson especially, I've been able to do these really cool things within Hudson and within the community. The Coca-Cola Scholarship, I'm so, so excited about, not only because of the money, but because I get to meet these other 149 students from around the nation who are doing these amazing things. And just the opportunities through that and the connection with Coca-Cola, you know, I'd love to work for them someday, you know? The opportunities through that. And I leave for Coca-Cola Scholars Weekend on Thursday. So I get to spend five days with all, with everyone down in Atlanta at the Coca-Cola headquarters. And I'm so excited, we're going to do like service projects and get to know each other and, you know, so I think there's a lot of, there are resources, all of them, you know, to connect. And then the Coles, for the Cole Scholarship, I just went to a banquet on Sunday where I got to meet Herb Cole and, you know, other individuals who had, who had done similar service type activities in their communities. And that was really, that was really awesome.
We thank you for exemplifying Hudson and representing us so well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, tell us where we're going to go to school.
What's that?
Where are you going to plan to go to school?
Oh, UW-Madison.
And what's your area of study going to be?
I'm hoping to go into business, probably something math, math in business. I'm hoping business will give me a degree that's flexible enough. My dream job would be working in corporate giving. So say work for Coca-Cola and they have $20 million they want to donate. And then I can create foundations and projects and who I want to sponsor and make a difference that way because I think there'd be resources there.
So Deanna, remember Hudson when you take on that job, okay?
I'll keep that in mind, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on on our agenda, we have superintendent's report.
Good evening.
Mary, you have three items.
I do. Good evening to everyone. First, I will share the certified results from the April 7th Board of Education election. And we have three seats that were open. And those candidates who were elected to those seats in order of their number of votes are Rob Brown and Sandy Gurke has been reelected, so congratulations to you and Sue Kattas. And so those, Rob and Sue, who will be joining the board, will, their first time taking office will be April 27th. And so the May board meeting will be their first official board meeting as we move forward.
Congratulations to those who are elected and congratulations on your reelection, Sandy.
So moving forward with your Child Can Work. This was a workshop, a three-hour workshop that we sponsored in the district. And we had attendance of 50 parents from all over the region. These parents are parents of students with disabilities attending this workshop. And the parents learned about systems to support adults with disabilities in obtaining and maintaining employment. And I want to thank Student Services Director Tony Mara for coordinating this effort for us and making this available to parents in the Hudson School District, but across the region as well. And then the next agenda item, certainly it's great to see faculty leaders in our school district recognized and being able to share their talents and expertise with their colleagues around the state. So congratulations to Andrea Ganski, who is the school psychologist at Willow River Elementary. She has been elected treasurer of the Executive Board of the Wisconsin School Psychologists Association. And then also to Angela Gable, who is a school counselor at Hudson Middle School. And she is now on the Wisconsin School Counselors Association Board of Directors. And she will be joining EP Rocks Counselor Kelly Curtis, who is the past president of that organization. And Deanna, who we just saw, that's Kelly's daughter. So talent runs in the family for sure. And that's my report.
Okay, next on the item of agenda is recognition of board members Brian Bell and Tom Holland for their years of service. And this is, they're concluding their third terms and I'll turn it over to Mary.
So we could spend quite a bit of time tonight recognizing these two leaders from our community. Both are strong courageous leaders who have demonstrated over and over again how much they care about the district and this community. They have, they were elected, both of them, in 2006 for the first time. As Jamie said, nine years of service, three terms on the Board of Education. And so I'll talk about each one individually and I know other board members and maybe directors would like to say a few words as well. So I'll just get started and I'm going to limit my comments because I figure other people will want some time to say something as well. So just know that, Tom and Brian. So starting with Tom, Tom has served two years as president of the board, two years as vice president, one year as treasurer, and one year as clerk. And I look at Tom and I think of the word leadership. He has been my guide and mentor through his term on the board and certainly has his term as president. He understands large organizations like the Hudson School District and that was very beneficial to me as he coached me and counseled me over the years. And certainly he understands leadership and has demonstrated that multiple, multiple times. I worked very closely with Tom and the one thing that I can say for sure, he had a, has a wonderful gift of giving time to me and counsel for, even sometimes when it's 11 o'clock at night, we've had those kind of conversations. So really appreciate his leadership and his counsel as well over the years. Do you want me to go on with Brian or do you want board members to speak about them individually?
Yeah.
Keep going?
Yep.
Okay. Brian Bell, once again provided exemplary service on the Board of Education. One year as vice president, three years as treasurer, a year as clerk. And one of the things that I really remember about Brian and his leadership is co-chairing HSD 2025. And the name HSD 2025, which is our strategic vision, came from Brian's idea. So not only that, but when I think of Brian, I think of a visionary who has high expectations and has high expectations of everyone else, including me. And he does a wonderful job of balancing what's best for students and student needs with the impact on our taxpayers. And he was a strong advocate for both. He stretched me many times in my thinking. And I have deeply appreciated his support during tough and challenging issues. So thank you, Brian.
Other board members?
Yes. So one thing I wanted to say about both of these leaders is that they've led our district through some very turbulent times, from challenging economics to legislative changes with Act 10 and through an ongoing difficult and highly controversial decision of secondary space for our district. I thank both of you for keeping focused on the vision of the Hudson School District as a district of excellence. For Tom, I want to tell you that I admire the dedication and the passion that you have had in the roles that you have served on the school board and the sacrifices that you have made to do the work of the district. You sat in the hot seat, serving as president during some very difficult times of confusion and unpredictability and always led with the best interest of the students, taxpayers, and the community and the employees of the district in mind. So thank you for that. Regarding Mr. Bell, I appreciate your common sense approach to serving on the board. For many years, you served as the treasurer and led the board and the district through some difficult budget decisions while managing to maintain that high quality of education this community has appreciated. I appreciate the focus you've had in the areas of technology, Mandarin Chinese, and the ever-popular encyclopedia use of the district. So thank you both for your service.
Other board members?
Mr. President?
Rose.
You know, I just want to say it's been a great two years and had a blast getting to know you guys. You've been great leaders, you've been great examples in terms of the time and commitments that you guys put into this. Tom, maybe we'll see each other in airports once in a while on our travels. But, you know, certainly thank you for everything that you've done and your continued commitment. And Brian, you know, really enjoyed the friendship that we've been able to build as well. I think you're one hell of a leader, both in the board as well as in your business profession. And learned a few things from you along the way here, certainly hope to continue to keep some of those, trying to keep meetings moving along and going quickly, encouraging people to get to the point as fast as they can. But also just, you know, keeping a good head about you and asking tough questions and making sure that you challenge people along the way. So I think you guys have been, you know, great stewards for what Hudson represents and appreciate all the time that you guys have put forth. And Sandy, I just wanted to say congrats to you as well in your reelection and look forward to serving the next year at least while that'll be my turn to go back around further for that as well. But congratulations to you too.
Anyone else, other comments?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Brian, I'd like to thank you both as well. I'm going to keep my focus on you because looking up at this picture, it's this angelic picture of Brian, it doesn't fit. I think, I think what was always most striking in the short time I've been able to serve with you was seeing how vehemently you could disagree in work sessions while in the same breath reaffirming your affection for one another, which I think is a model for us to disagree but to work together. So I thank you and for your many years of service. Appreciate it, thank you.
All right. I too want to just echo gratitude for Tom and Brian, your service. I don't think there's anyone that can question your dedication to the community. Tom came here and helped get our YMCA started and was the executive there for many years and then decided to run for school board on top of that and did so, you know, while he still had kids in the district. Brian did the same. I have a lot of respect for people who are willing to do that, still have kids. Because both of these gentlemen also always put family first and, but with, we need more people like them that put family and community first. And they came with some great skill sets too and we really need that. Their experience in the private sector definitely helped build me as a leader and I really appreciate their guidance over this last year. Brian was very critical in supporting me and Tom, led by example in my first year on the board. So I really appreciate you guys' efforts. Do you have any comments to say? Yes, you get any last words?
This is all probably unnecessary and I'm reminded of what John Wooden had said one time, I think something, I'll paraphrase, that, you know, don't take credit or criticism either way, don't put too much weight on either one. So, but we do appreciate your thoughts or your comments. I do appreciate your comments, I'll let Brian speak for himself. I'm just thinking about this a little bit today, that nine years ago I reluctantly agreed to put my name up to run for a school board. It's nowhere, anywhere close to my radar. I mean, I've been on, been on many community boards, you know, chamber and, and youth boards and church boards and lots of boards. There's nothing quite like a school board though. And, and so there was quite an education for me. And so as I found myself in the position, not knowing exactly what to expect and, and not knowing really what I was doing, I really do kind of throw back the words that Mary was saying to me about the things that I was helping her with. She's helped me immensely in learning about school boards and school politics. And I'll, I'll just conclude by saying that this is as close as I'll ever want to come to politics. So, thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Just a couple of comments, it was interesting. My senior in high school, who was a third grader when I, when I was elected, it's crazy. I think he, he got late for an assignment, he had to write a story about someone. So he, I think it was due, so he asked me some comment, some questions. So, "So hey dad, why'd you run for school board?" And I'm like, "Well, thanks for asking me after nine years why I ran for school board." So, so I said, it's really, you know, I think it's, I think it's incumbent upon all of us and there's so many people in this community who volunteer and give their time. And I just think it's really important to have a service component to, to your lives. And that's, I said, you know, the, you know, the kids in this district and across our country are our future. And so I think it's a really appropriate investment. So I've been glad to serve and I appreciate the opportunity that I've been given to do that, so. And I also want to do just a call for the, for the district leadership. Mary, you and your team, all the, all the building leadership, the faculty and the staff. I've been so impressed with, with this team. And in fact, my, my highlight of each year has been going to the staff recognition dinner.
You're still invited, so.
Thanks, but it was, yeah, that thing was, there's some really great stories and just unbelievable amount of commitment, you know, in this profession. So it's, my hat's off to the, to all the employees of the, of the district. And finally to my fellow board members that are sitting here and ones I've served with before. And I appreciate all the investments that you make in the community and everything that you do. And I'll miss working with you and it's been, it's been a great, a great experience. So thank you very much. Thank you.
I just want to make one other comment. You brought up the staff recognition banquet and so yes, you are supposed to be there with your spouse. And Tom, I know you're going to be out of town. And we'll do this once again, but there might be a few laughs, a few more laughs there as well. So you deserve all the recognition you're getting tonight and a little bit more.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to that. Now we move on to reports and High School Learning for the Future update with Freshmen Academies. And Mary, do you have some people to introduce and to speak on this?
Thank you, Jamie. I'd like to introduce Principal Peg Shoemaker from the high school and she will introduce her team. Certainly we know that High School Learning for the Future, Freshmen Academy is one part of that. And it is one of the initiatives to move forward and advance at the high school, HSD 2025. So Peg, welcome.
Thank you. Just bear with me one moment to thank Tom and to thank Brian for their vision. I, I think about with Brian nine years ago in High School Learning for the Future and always your support for innovation and for moving learning to a higher level. And so I'm so grateful for your leadership and support on the board, so thank you. So I'd like to introduce Josh Holverson, who, Josh is our Dean of Students and is also, from five years ago, led the team in smaller learning communities and looking specifically at transitions and freshmen in particular and the unique uniqueness of them. And with, with me this evening are just three super amazing teachers. We have Brian Johnson, who teaches freshman science, and Laura Johnson, who teaches freshman English. And then Greg Gamache, who is new with us this year, and, but a very veteran teacher and we're so lucky to have him as well and he teaches freshman social studies. So with that, I just want to, I'm going to turn it over to Josh and the teachers and let them tell you about the benefits of what we're doing for freshmen, how it's working, and let you know just how valuable the program is, so.
So we need to kind of go back and look at why we're here. This is the second year of our Freshmen Academy and these are the things that we looked at. The freshman animal coming in to the high school, we were just taking them out of a house system and they were coming right into regular ed. By going through and visiting, boy, I think we did like six or seven big high schools that have that same issue, we came up with these kind of ideas and goals. So this has been kind of our guiding thing. So when we put teams together, when we decide to do things that we want to do, these are the things that we're looking at. Again, main thing is their grades, their academic success, their social and emotional well-being. And then with that, we hope that it also influences behavior and attendance. So other things that we can look at. One of the main reasons freshmen deserve all this extra attention is we know the freshman year is the most important. Statistically, if a student fails their freshman year, it increases their chance to not graduate. It has another effect too that we figured out quite early on. When a student fails, that student has to repeat that class. That means they're sitting in that seat again. They're not sitting in that AP course, they're not sitting in that art, they're not sitting in that elective. So this allows us to, to have a freshman be successful is also going to impact space. So they're able to move along through the system and not cause any choke points. So this is kind of our, our guiding thing. A review of what and how we work, hopefully these pop up. In that green area is our core. So like Greg Gamache, he's our world connections, Brian Johnson's our science, and Laura Johnson is our English. So that's how they were paired together. A change from last year, so this is new. We had teachers that would try to work with only three other sections. So they worked about with 90 students. This year we tried something new, they're all freshmen all day long. So they're doing that every hour and they have five sections with that. It, it does kind of increase the amount of student connections that they have to get familiar with, but it's the same content, so it allows them to kind of perfect their craft. We still have our advisory, so that's still another watchful eye on all of our students at Hudson. And then we have, excuse me, our math and our electives. So what we wanted to do is kind of let the teachers explain how they have a role in this. So I'm going to kind of go down the line and pass the mic and they're going to walk through kind of how they've changed their practice and ultimately how has that affected our students.
Hi, how are you doing? This is nerve wracking, holy cow. To remember this, we're saying next time I have my freshmen get nervous for presentation, "Don't worry about it." I'll remember this. I've been, I've had the opportunity to teach at, at three other high schools that they don't do anything for freshmen. And, you know, just looking, I didn't know anything different, that's all I've ever known. And you're in your content group. So as a social studies teacher, I hang out with other 11th grade teachers at the time. And you would just hear horror stories from the ninth grade teachers and you would see ninth graders in the hallways of these schools. And the schools I was in were very similar size to Hudson, metro schools over in the Twin Cities. And it was a rugged first month. I mean, there would be students who would break down. And, and really, one of the reasons I never wanted to teach ninth grade was because of that. You would see these ninth grade teachers would just be, "Oh my gosh." And, and you think about it, I mean, as teachers, we are given the opportunity to transition, right? We go from college to student teaching, we have a mentor in the classroom with us, right? That helps us along until, you know, we can, we can do our trade. And we're asking these ninth graders to step out of a house where they're monitored and very structured. And now they're in a high school and they're, they have six minutes to get from a quarter mile, right? Building to building or wing to wing, my locker. I mean, they're worried about the most minute things. And Hudson is by far the best school that I've been in as far as dealing with ninth graders. It's, it's amazing. Just the opportunity, you know, so you're looking at past experience and then, so what do we do here that's better? Content teachers, we do need to talk to each other, you know, and we have that once, once a week and that's awesome. What are you working on? You know, how did that, that last assignment go? So we can touch base every Thursday morning and that's great. But really, for ninth graders, you know, I, I don't know if it's so much about content as it is about relationships with these kids. And, and this allows us to build relationships with students. We know our students. And it's great because every single day I can talk with Laura, her room is just right next to me. Brian's right down the hallway. Every sixth hour, "Do we need to meet today?" "Yeah, like a couple of minutes, I need to talk to you about a couple of our cherubs." And, you know, we'll throw some names out. And another thing that I think has kind of developed is we have levels of intervention that we don't talk about them, we're like, "This isn't a level one alert." But we just kind of mention a student's name and you kind of look at their faces and, yeah, okay, they're, this is something we need to address. So we can talk to advisories, we can, the three of us all have this student, so we can address any issues with that student. Week later, a couple of days later, it's not working, right? The student is still, well, now we can go to the next level, we can have Josh come in. Are there any issues? We can have a counselor come in. And then I kind of think the third level of intervention, if you want to call it that, is we've met with parents. We've had parents come in and, and talk to us, sometimes initiated by parents, sometimes initiated by us. We can also have one-on-ones with the student and just talk to them very openly, privately. So what can we do to help you? I've never had anything like that. I've never had the opportunity to build those types of relationships and really do what's best for students. And looking at it from the outside, you think, but it happens naturally and that's what makes it work. You know, the three of us just interact and we kind of know, we have our students where we know at each level, every student. Does that make sense to you guys? You know, like we, we have kind of our, I don't want to say chronic offenders, but because it's not behavior, it's just grades. These are people, we need to, to really stay on them. And then Laura and I have decided just amongst ourselves that we're, we are picking one student. And we chose one and I know that his advisor, his, and so I've gone to his advisor and said, "Every academic Wednesday, I want you to send him to me." And he said, "Do you need more days?" And, "Well, can I have him Tuesday and Wednesday?" So I'm going to stay on him until he's caught up in my class. And then next he gets to go to Laura. And we'll get this young man caught up and then we're going to target another student and we're just going to see how it works. And, and really, we're just going to try to change it, you know, one student at a time. And I guess, I'm just, it's, it's a really good system that you have set up here. And, you know, there's changes that probably need to be made, but what I've been in in the past where you're just in content groups versus in academy, it's, it's hands down much, much better system for the student and I think for the teachers too.
Thanks. Listening to Greg speak reminds me of my, my own experience in that I was at the middle school for nine years and so having these conversations...
school for nine years, and so having these conversations about students with other core teachers is second nature. I had less time, like Greg was speaking about, to talk to my content teachers, but daily in the middle school, we meet and talk about kids. We build that relationship daily in our middle school here. And so when I came on board of the Freshman Academy last year, it seemed second nature. It's what you do, and it helps students, it's beneficial for students. Kind of our, you know, my topic tonight is, what Greg alluded to is, when do we do this? When do we have these conversations? And Greg, Laura, and I all share a common planning time. We use that time in a variety of ways, some of which Greg already spoke about. We get together and talk about kids. We talk about who's struggling, we talk about who's doing well. We talk about methods that we can use to help students, we talk about how to get students back on track. We work with Josh in collecting data, so we have quantitative data that we can gather from Skyward, attendance rates, homework completion, grades, a number of things we can get from that program, and we also just talk qualitatively. How is this student doing today? When you get to know your students, you notice changes. Behavior changes, relationship changes, friend changes, and when you pick up on those things that are going to affect your students academically, that aren't school related, and an adult can talk to them about that, you're going to keep them on track. And so that's kind of what we do in our sixth hour period, is we get together, we talk about kids, how they're doing, how their grades are, how they're acting. And on top of that, when we decide there needs to be an intervention, we all have that period to get together and say, let's call Johnny in. Let's call Suzie's parents in, and let's have a counselor come in, and we'll sit down and talk with her and see what's going on. And that really seems to help keep our kiddos on track, and like Josh mentioned, keep them successful their freshman year, so they can get into the electives as they get older and do things they're interested in for their future, and we keep them on track. So that's our common time.
All right. This is my 11th year teaching at Hudson, and I've taught ninth graders each year for 11 years, I've also taught juniors, too, but I do love the ninth graders, and I can't imagine going back to a system in which we didn't have academies. Just to see, you know, from my first year here, the first few years, and the number of kids who really slipped through the cracks versus these last two years, and what a positive change we've had. What's new to ninth grade academy this year is project-based learning. So PEG came to us this fall and talked to us about it, and told us, you know, that that was one of the major shifts for the academies this year. So we sat down as a team and talked for quite a while about, okay, what units do we have? What are some of our content standards that would fit into a project with all three of our core classes? So we came up with having kids look at technology, and then we came up with a driving question for them, because project-based learning is all about inquiry. And so we came up with technology, and really looking at technology, and is it always a good thing, or what are some of the negatives to it? So really, what is beneficial, I think, is that the kids had a lot of choice in this. And the question, I'll just kind of go through, like, what we brainstormed, it was technology, and our question, like I said, was how can we decide if technology in the real world is a good or a bad thing? So it was engaging, it was an open-ended question, and like I said, the students really had voice and choice in this. And how it started and how it connected for all of us is Brian started in science with the kids, he kind of introduced the unit to them as an entry event, looked at technology, and the kids did a little, you know, pre-research in pairs, I think it was. And they kind of debated, you know, the good and the bad side of technologies. And then from that, they each were able to choose their own technology that they wanted to delve into. And then the kids were researching both in Brian's class and my class at the same time, which was great. My part of it was a research paper. And so this was the first year that, you know, I've had Brian on board. It was great to be able to say, hey, you know, you guys were doing this this morning, now you're doing it today. And so, like I said, my end, the kids were writing a persuasive paper, and they had to choose one side of their technology, either the good or the bad. And then they were working on that, and toward the end, then Greg's, like, final product was a public service announcement. And then they were looking at both sides of the issue again. So really, what I felt was that the kids this year, just to look at, like, really the positives that came out of this, I just felt such a sense of connectedness between the three. Almost on a daily basis, I was talking about, oh, in science today, or in World Connections today, remember your PSAs? And I just really felt like the kids had such a deep understanding for their topics, and really went into more analysis with their topics. So just as an example, some of the kids were researching medical marijuana, and I know in the past, to write a persuasive paper, they might have looked just very surface level at, oh, marijuana, you know, you can get a high off of it. And, and this year, I mean, they're really making a strong argument for both sides of, you know, making that legal, so I just felt like we really had a lot of success with project-based learning, and we're excited to do it again, I think, next year.
I love spreadsheets and numbers. As soon as I had a chance to, to work with the Freshman Academy team last year, it was running F lists every week. You can see that that's a result. If you look at the teachers here, though, this is, this is what's causing change. It's the backbone, it's the, it's the focus on the student. Classrooms have changed a lot, I would imagine, the last 60 years. So here's the data, and basically, these are just the number of Fs that are given out, because an F represents, you know, the possibility of sitting in a seat again. So one student may get three or four in the past. They may just get one, but that's, that's a spot, that's a seat. So I look at it that way, and the data starts from the past on the bottom, works all the way up, those are class of, so that's graduating year. And that light purple was our first year, and then the blue is this current year. So, you know, I'm not making any predictions of when it's going to hit zero, but I, I believe the trend is going the right way. We're a lot more adaptive, and when we look at data, we can go ahead and try to cut it off before grading actually occur. As I was out playing with my kids today with the grill going, I was listening to radio, and it basically said, 1950, they asked students one question, I'm important. 10% of the kids said they were important. That, that was their perception, whether that's bad or good, because you'd be, oh, they're all narcissistic, or they're not, because in 2005, that number was 82. And that was the discussion, so it was 82% in 2005. And is, is that a good thing, is that a bad thing? Kids' perceptions have changed, you know, and if you look at how our teachers are addressing it, it's student-focused. When I was in school, it was teacher-focused. So hopefully, by making these types of changes, the results will continue to be positive.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from board members?
Yeah, Mr. President? I guess Laura, this question's maybe for you, because you taught ninth grade for 11 years, so what was the biggest change that you guys had to deal with as teachers for ninth graders that, that was maybe the toughest to get past? Because I know it wasn't easy to get into this new type of learning either, there was a lot of work and training and effort that went into this as a team. So what was maybe the toughest part of that transition or change a couple of years ago? Yeah.
Well, Josh, Josh had the, the catchphrase that we're building the airplane as we're flying it. So I guess, you know, as we started, I appreciated having Brian on the, Brian on the team coming from the middle school, because when we would meet, at first, it was like, what are we supposed to be talking about? And I think we would identify kids, but then we didn't know what to do with it from that point on. And I know our first year, too, Josh had said, we have a little different change in the way it's structured. I guess we called it platooning the kids last year. So like in the afternoon sections, I would have the same kids in my sixth hour, that would have Brian, then seventh hour, and then they would go to World Connections eighth hour, and a lot of the behaviors just escalated as the day went on. So that was really a challenge, I would say, it was kind of the behaviors last year, and knowing what to do in terms of flagging these kids and what to do next.
All right. Good. I mean, change is tough regardless, and that's a pretty significant change to work through, and pretty constant, though, it seems like it's always going to be changing.
It was a positive change, for sure.
That's good. Good to hear. Very good update, thank you very much. Appreciate the perspective.
Anyone else? Yeah, and thank you. Keep up the good work, I like the trends in those numbers. Thank you. Okay, next up on the reports, our Career and Tech Technical Education Blueprint for Prosperity Grant update. Sandy?
Thank you.
This is your area, do we have any speakers?
Yes, they're heading up to the mic now. Melissa Hansen, Melissa is our School-to-Career Coordinator, and she works 24/7 to create partnerships and opportunities that benefit the students of Hudson. Through partnerships with our technical colleges, business partners, and neighboring districts, Melissa and the company you see here this evening are here to share two exciting grants, which complement our work with High School Learning for the Future, and embrace our vision to prepare all students for post-secondary success. Melissa?
Good evening. Tonight, I thank you for the opportunity to come in front of you to talk a little bit about two opportunities, one that we have been working on this past year, and one that we will accelerate into during the next school year. So they fall underneath the umbrella of Blueprint for Prosperity, which is a fast-forward grant through the Department of Workforce Development. Our first grant that we'll talk about this evening is Accelerating Youth Career Readiness, and our second is the Dual Enrollment Welding Academy. So with me tonight, I have one of our instructors who has stepped forward to get some additional training, Erin Haskins, who is one of our technology and engineering instructors at the high school, and two students who will speak to you about their experience with some pre-industry certifications. So with that being said, about a year ago, I came to you to give you a report, essentially to let you know that we had received a grant in a little over $108,000 to look at pre-industry certifications for students. And with this grant, what we did was have a partnership, and they are listed there with, in front of you, CISA 11, Workforce Resource, WITC, and five area schools. And when we got together, we really talked about looking at labor market and needs in this area, in our region, what we're hearing from employers, as well as some of those industry certifications that we knew students could earn while they were still in high school. So while we would have liked to have been able to pull out all industry areas, we focused on three: construction, hospitality, and healthcare. Within those, we had stackable credential or stackable industry certification opportunities for students that all culminated with youth apprenticeships. And I'll talk a little bit about our adventures today with that culminating experience. But in order to keep this whole process, we had, we had one year to make it all happen. We had planned to train 80 students within those five districts with stackable credentials and really offer them jobs. So our job was to look at at least 85% placement for those students. So we knew that at the end of this year, we just didn't want it to fizzle out and be done. So we had to look at some pieces for sustainability. We knew we needed to train teachers, so we opted to train or offer training for OSHA 10, OSHA 30 for teachers, as well as serve-safe food manager. Sylvia Strum, one of our Family Consumer Science teachers who isn't with us tonight, she did step forward and was certified this year. So now we have that opportunity to weave that into our curriculum at the high school to elevate those opportunities and curriculum within that department. And Erin will talk a little bit about his experience with OSHA 10, OSHA 30.
So recently, I had two weeks of safety training. To most of you, that sounds like a lot of fun, I'm sure. So two weeks over at the Safety Council in St. Paul, we dove into this book, it's the General Standards for OSHA, so that relates to most occupations. So we dove into this, how to use it, how to read it, how to understand the language in there. I was in a class with a bunch of different professions. There was a lady that works on oil rigs up in Alaska. Another guy, they design and build aircrafts up in Duluth. So there was a wide range of people, and these guys are all safety people, they, their jobs, they have degrees and master degrees, and some doctorate, doctorate degrees in safety. So I got, it was a good learning experience, got, made a lot of good connections, good life experiences that they talk about, and a lot of it was way over my head, because I was, I maybe do a lot of safety in the tech ed department, but not to the depth that they do. So after two weeks of that training, I'm certified to teach the OSHA 10, which gives the kids a certificate that is recognized by industry throughout the United States. And that, I believe, is a lifetime certificate that they can hold, hold on to for the rest of their life. So thinking of that, and when they're going out and getting jobs, whether it's now, whether it's Burger King, or later on, once they're through college or whatever, that's going to give them an advantage on their resume or on their, on their application. So that kickstarts them also, it works with our apprenticeship program. I think they're working on having that as part of that, well, that's right there, yeah, part of the apprenticeship program. So it's a 10-hour course that covers any, a lot of stuff under safety, from personal protective equipment, fall protection equipment, machine guarding, which is important stuff that we apply in our tech ed areas, and a wide, wide range of different other things. So I guess, what am I blabbing on here? So, yeah, they'll have a certificate after 10 hours of training that they can take with them, so it gives them an advantage, whether it's going to college, going into a career, or whatever they choose to do.
In addition to the OSHA, we also offered trainings that both Grace and Charles went and took advantage of. We offered not only, like I said, the OSHA 10, but also an employability skills training. And that employability skills training was really to give students a little bit of help in creating an elevator pitch, and looking at resumes, and really preparing them for the event that took place today. Today, we had a job fair, it was held at St. Curry Central High School. We had 26 of the 28 employers come, and we had nearly 50 jobs available for those kids. So they were ready to hire them as youth apprentices, so we're very excited about that opportunity, and these two will talk a little bit about their experiences.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Charles Warner, I'm a junior at Hudson High School. I have just recently filled out my final paperwork for my Eagle Scout application. I'm working on getting into the engineering field. I am very thankful for the opportunity of this grant to increase my employability skills and take OSHA 10. I feel like I've gained a lot of valuable information, and I am furthering myself to try to get into the field. I attended the job fair today, and through the skills that I've gathered, I was informed by about five out of the six employers that I would be able to be hired on the spot if I was 18. So those skills were gained from those classes and from practice, so I thank you guys for that opportunity, and I encourage more support for grants in the future.
Hi. Okay, I'm little, so. All right. My name is Grace Warner, I am a sister, and I am a freshman at the Hudson High School. I have taken part in OSHA, which was an amazing experience for me. And then I also did the Get Your Game On Employability Skills. I was planning on but unable to attend the job fair today, so I have my resume all made, which was very exciting for me. And then I am also going to be partaking in the CNA training this summer. So I'm extremely excited about that, I think that's going to be an amazing opportunity. And I came into freshman year, and I had this dream, and I was like, I want to be a doctor someday. And I went to a healthcare day field trip, and that, like, totally just widened my horizons, and I was like, oh my gosh, there's so much stuff I can do. Coming in as a freshman, I can, I have so much time to do all this stuff. And Ms. Hansen here, big thank you to her, she's been amazing through this whole thing. She's given me, given me so many opportunities to take part in all these things, and made me aware of them, and what I need to do, when I need to do them, and how I need to do them. So I think that this grant, or all these grants that we've been given, are extremely important to widening the horizons of students and their futures. Thank you.
I did, I do need to mention that Charlie was a little bit reserved. I did let him know tonight that we are working with those employers, too, who came up. They couldn't stop talking about the Charles who is in the room today. And some of those said, you know, I think we're willing to even bend some of our rules as far as hiring student learners. And one of the employers actually did let me know that they wish they would have had a recorder for his elevator pitch because it was absolutely outstanding. So, we were very excited today. Lots of positive comments and feedback from employers. So, we're just hoping that we can continue to accelerate this project and continue growth in this area for offering opportunities for students. So, I did just want to mention, too, on the screen prior, that there were numbers on there. We don't need to go into great detail. But those who have been trained thus far and what our plan is for summer, too, so we'll have additional options. So, the other fast-forward grant is a Dual Enrollment Welding Academy that will be offered in conjunction with WITC, and it'll be offered at New Richmond High School. This grant is, the partners are, there are seven schools who partnered together with WITC to look at students in particular who are interested in a welding pathway. The students who will take part in this from those seven schools do need to be seniors, and there are 16 seats available. We were allotted two seats for Hudson, and I know as of today, they extended the due date for applications to May 1st. And then from there, we will be able to, on a first-come, first-served basis, so if we have more applicants. Right now, I believe we have two in. But just a little bit about the grant. Students who do take part will work toward two embedded certificates that are approved at the state level. Melded, or I'm sorry, shielded metal arc welding and gas metal arc welding. So, they will have those technical diplomas upon completion of this project or this pathway. They will also earn credits at the technical college and in their home high schools. So, there are a lot of opportunities available for students here to really accelerate that pathway if they're interested in welding. So, we're very excited that students will be able to partake in that.
Any questions from board members?
Mr. President?
Yes, Tom.
Just a question about the youth apprenticeship training.
Yes.
I just, I didn't get much on that. I just would, can you talk a little bit more about what that is?
Yes, youth apprenticeship is an option for juniors or seniors. So, it's a one- or two-year option that combines academics as well as on-the-job training, work experience. There is a paid, it's a paid position. Students work alongside a mentor. There are multiple options for areas that a business may choose to get involved with as far as supporting a student learner within their environment. At the end of the experience, students put in for a one-year, 450 hours of work-based experience. And at a two-year, it's 900 hours. So, we actually, this year, from the three schools within our grant, it's a separate grant, a youth apprenticeship grant, from New Richmond, St. Chris Central, and Hudson, we had 49 students participate in the program, so 33 of those being from Hudson.
That's terrific. I just want to comment that I think this is a very valuable initiative that's gone on. I think particularly for local businesses. I think they've got to be thrilled with this kind of initiative because I know that, as you indicated in one of your paragraphs, that, you know, these are skills that are in demand right now.
Yes.
A number of skills that are in demand. So, congratulations to you, and thank you.
We work very facetiously with our business partners to really get them educated on the experience and this opportunity and hopefully calm their fears about working with our students. And I did not mention, but at the end of this year, in recognition, actually, at the end of this month, April 30th, we're holding our Partners in Education celebration, that we do honor our employers and our students who do take part in these programs. And with the fast-forward grant, Secretary Newson from the Department of Workforce Development will be present at our banquet and has asked to be able to come and speak to our progress.
I would think those businesses would be honoring you as well because you're doing them a great service in a sense. Maybe there's some resources available for this project, too.
It's fun work.
Very good. All right. Any others? Bruce?
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments. So, one of our workshops, there were some, you know, community members talking about having opportunities for kids to come out and get great jobs right out of school. And I think that that's very available here and will continue to be so. Appreciate the work that our teachers are doing here. Also, Charlie, did you say you're, you just finished up your Eagle Scout?
Yes, I've been working on my final paperwork, and it's pending approval right now.
That's quite an accomplishment. It's something you'll carry with you forever and something you should be very proud of. So, congratulations on that as well. Nice work.
Thank you for coming. All right, next up, I guess my name is next to this, but I have someone to help me. So, Jill, you'll come forward. We have our community engagement process ongoing. This was initiated in January, and so we're now in our third month, and we're still in our second stage. And so, with that, I'll just kind of turn it over to Jill. We have a short presentation and take any board questions.
Oh, it's on. Okay. Thank you.
By the way, Jill Burchill, who is a member of our community and one of our stalwarts on the committee, putting in dozens of hours already on this.
We're a member, a group of eight on our committee, and I'm representing them. So, this is a report on their behalf. It'll be a brief report, but don't hesitate to ask questions. And I'm going to steal the comment from the other group. We are building the plane as we are driving it, right? So, that's going to be our new motto. You may remember that our, make sure I get the right one. Yep, our project is to get, gather community input so that you can make intelligent decisions about the facilities of the future. And, excuse me, I'm going to apologize in advance. I have a cold, so I will cough every once in a while.
Join the club. Join the club, Jill.
Yeah, I know. It's crazy.
Maybe we picked it up at a meeting.
We started with the first stage, and that really was an online discussion and survey about, with some baseline information and also questions about what they're like about the school district and what they have concerns about. From that information, it rolled into Stage Two. Stage Two, we're taking that information and narrowing it down to really identify gaps and needs. And I think it's important that the community is providing that information. The, we're doing that in Stage Two by having workshops. Bruce mentioned one comment from the workshops. We have four that have been completed with 80 participants, and we have two more coming. So, hopefully, you will pass on to your networks about the workshops that are scheduled for Wednesday and Thursday this week.
So, tomorrow morning and then Thursday night at the middle school.
Tomorrow morning at the PIPs and Thursday night at the middle school. We also have online, I believe it's online right now, the survey. So, we had great response from the online Stage One input. Not great response on the questions, but a lot of people, about 1,700, if I remember right, looked at it. So, we hope that over the next week or two, a lot of people will look at it online. The feedback we're asking for and the discussions that are happening in Stage Two are really around three main topics. How our kids learn, what they need to be successful post-high school, and how can we better meet other needs, the needs beyond basic education. And within each of these three areas, there are three questions, and I won't go over those. But they are mainly discussion starters about how our kids learn, the, what they need to be successful after graduation, and other activities. We also have a lot of time and attention spent on what are we missing? If a community member has input that doesn't relate to these three topics or it doesn't relate to anything, any of the three areas that we're talking about, that certainly is opening. So, you can, is open for input. So, you can see, we are asking specific questions around these topic areas. What is or is not important about this, really with a focus on facilities. We're not redoing 2025, which was a great comment, I think somebody made at one of the sessions. That is the foundation. So, we're talking about the facilities that deliver the mission of 2025. And then we're asking what questions or concerns that they might have, and then also, as I said again, what's missing. Open-ended question at the end. And by the way, we've modified the questions a little bit. At the beginning, we're trying to make sure that everything is very clear and not leading in any way. That's certainly not the intention of our committee. And so, we have, if you went to one of the first sessions, you'll see that right now the questions are a little bit different and the materials, just to make sure that we're being very open for people to provide their input and not leading them in any direction. And so, we're also asking questions about what else do they want, they want us to know? What else do they want us to ask about? All of the feedback in Stage Two will be online. Every word that you put on a Post-it note in Stage Two will be online. We had great credibility, I think, from Stage One by putting all the responses online. So, we're doing the same thing. So, citizens can go look at what others have said about those questions, and so that's fabulous. The next step, and this is where the analogy of building the plane while we're flying it, is really important. The next step in our process is to take the needs and gaps, and we speak of it in a funnel, and to funnel it down to prioritized or key needs and gaps, and then options and scenarios to deliver for those. We don't know how we're going to do this yet. It seems to be that really the online version of input, people are all busy in their lives, is very successful. The key is, we need a lot of people's input. Otherwise, we'll be providing you with the input from a few, a small few, and we don't want to do that. So, for the, yourself, your networks, and for the community at large, we need you to participate in the next two workshops. And as we said, I'll repeat them, Jamie, they're tomorrow at 8 o'clock at the PIPs, Thursday at 7 o'clock at the middle school. And I believe there is a tour of the middle school in that session. So, if you're interested in seeing the middle school, I think that's a great one, and also online. So, if you go to the school district website, right in the front page, there's the link to the Survey Monkey for the online version.
Those tours, Dave, are those just before or that before and after? Just before, because of the late hour, it'll be getting done. I know when we did this on Saturday at the high school, we actually had more people taking the tour than were able to stay for the two hours for the workshop. But I think people are interested in seeing, you know, what our facilities offer.
Yeah, I just mentioned, these workshops, the six of them, are at different days, different times, some during the day, some in the evening, and we even had one at the high school on Saturday morning. So, as members of the audience view this, certainly, if you want to know anything about the process, where we are, or how other people have responded, go to the school district website. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Anything I forget, team members?
You did a good job, Jill. Very good.
Mr. President, just a
Yeah, Tom.
Since this is my last part, I mean, I get to go first, Bruce?
Please, please.
I'm deferring to him here.
I think we talked about this. First of all, thanks for coming when you're sick tonight. I think we probably reviewed this prior, but can you kind of review the timeline on outcomes that we're looking for?
Well, I'll answer, and then Jamie and Bruce or Dave fill in. We, our original plan was to mid and summer come up with some options, recommendations to the school board. But frankly, we're going to spend as much time as it takes to get the right amount of community input. We're always going to get those people input on the fringes, either side of a question. We need the people in the middle and to get their input. And personally, at 80 participants for Stage Two, that's not enough.
Okay, that was my next question.
And so, I mean, I have a different bar than Jamie does as to what success means, and we haven't set one. But we will take the time to get the input. There's no reason to rush to an answer that doesn't really represent community engagement. Did I say?
Yeah, and I would agree, yeah, as far as the number of participants. I think part of it is getting folks to come out for a two-hour, dedicate two hours to that time. They may be more prone, and I think we're going to see maybe better involvement online when people can do this, you know, when it's more convenient to them, number one. And number two is the subject matter. You know, we started out very, very general in Stage One. We're getting a little more specific as to the facility and how our facilities deliver our different programs. But when we get comments in both stages of people that are antsy, for lack of a better word, to get to talking about options, and when are we going to talk about options and scenarios to solve this? And people, some people thinking even that our discussion about some of these learning areas is so obvious. Of course, we need the house concept. Of course, we need academies. Let's just get the facility so we can deliver this better. And we say, we're saying not so fast. We don't want to take any presumptions or make any presumptions in that regard. But instead, you know, we'll get there about the options. People have to be patient. But we're going to, like Jill said, there is no set timeline, Tom. Bruce, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, I would agree. There's absolutely no set timeline. It is tough, you know? It's tough to get people out to these events. We did a mailing to every single household in Hudson School District. You know, we've been posting this on Facebook. We've been, you know, tweeting. We've been trying a lot of different ways to get the word out there, and it is just tough to get people participating. And one of the things that we talk about is how can we get to that sense within people that they had after the referendum? You know, whether they were happy or frustrated, you know? And that's the type of engagement and involvement that we need. We need everybody's input. While we didn't have a lot of people at the first one at Holton, it was a very interesting cross-section, I thought. You know, at the table that I sat at, we had some that really didn't want to spend another dollar and didn't want to spend any more tax money on facilities and infrastructure. We had people that felt that we should just be remodeling and keep the very centralized location that we had. And we had people that wanted a brand-new building, you know? So, it was very diverse. Everyone had great dialogue, great discussion. And, you know, it was, it was fun to participate in, and it was just hopeful that there would be more people there. So, if there's anything that we can do to get people out, we may choose to do more workshops, you know? But if we're not getting the type of participation there, hopefully, we can drive a lot more through the online portion. But, you know, definitely email it. I know that we also had some, you know, stakeholders that were going to push this site out to, to really encourage them to spread it within their network and try and get as much participation. And those stakeholders really spread the full gamut, you know, across the entire, you know, community. So, hopefully, we'll get a lot of great involvement with that.
And we're also going to get input, too, from Bray Architects, who were hired to assess our facilities. And we're expecting their report maybe coming out in early May. And so, it would really be premature to be talking about options before that anyway.
Oh, okay.
So, we're going to, we continue to gather more information. In fact, I think our next report is on it. Is there any more questions about this community engagement process?
I'd just like to ask Jill one question. The last report we got, I think Mr. Van Pelt was here maybe last month, and mentioned how many people had clicked into the website, into the survey, and how many had responded, actually took the time to respond. If I remember right, there was a small number that actually took the time to do the survey. There was something like 1,350, maybe, that had clicked into it, but only maybe 110 or something like that.
275 is the number I remember, something like that.
I was going to ask you, now that the 1,700, you have a figure that has now up to 1,700. Do you know how many of those have actually filled out the survey? Is that the 275 you're saying?
In Stage One, we're now to Stage Two, which we had hoped would work in a workshop setting because then people can have dialogues with each other, as Bruce was demonstrating. But we've augmented Stage Two with an online version as well. But we've augmented Stage Two with an online version as well. And that just went online, I think, yesterday or the day before. So we don't have any statistics from that. It went on yesterday, and we're advertising it's available. And we're hoping, you know, it would be great if it got 1,700 views, and it's a lot more specific type of input. So people may feel, oh, yeah, I know what I, I like small group learning settings, or I don't like them. And then it's more specific and something that they feel that they could make a comment on, rather than the generic topics.
We tried to keep it simple, too, Sandy. I think the first one, there was so much data there, you know? I heard it a lot. Even I sat behind my wife as she clicked through the buttons and was like, you know, this is, there's way too much information here. So she didn't go on from that first step. But this time, I think we tried to make it as simple as possible. I think the other thing that Jill brought up, which was good, and I've talked to a couple of people that attended the first one at Holton, we got a lot of great feedback. While it wasn't all positive, it was, you know, hey, don't put it down this way, change this, change that. It was great in that, as a team, we took that constructively and made some edits. So a couple of those individuals are going to go to another event now, another workshop to participate. Again, just trying to simplify it and really encourage the dialogue and open dialogue, not any one specific way, shape, or form.
Okay. Thanks, Jill. I just wondered if you knew how many had actually filled the thing out.
The Stage Two started yesterday. So I know I filled it out, so we've got one in so far.
So we have one. Okay, thank you.
Right. And people should continue to visit that as well. I mean, I suppose there are some people who saw Stage One, and like Bruce said, saw that they had to do 17 clicks or whatever to get through it, and gave up. But Stage Two looks a lot different than Stage One, and I imagine Stage Three is going to be even more different, so.
But come to the Phipps tomorrow, or go to the Middle School on Thursday. That's the best solution, then you get the dialogue.
Right, exactly. Thank you, Jill. Thank you for your efforts and your time.
Thanks, Jill.
All right, next, we have a report, and Dave Grambo, this is next to your name, but we have a guest to talk about this. We have preliminary long-term student projection data.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So I'll invite Dr. Tom Gillespie up, and while he's getting situated, I'll introduce him. So Dr. Tom Gillespie from Gillespie Demographics has quite a resume. He was longtime demographer for the state of Minnesota. He actually just recently did the study for the St. Croix Crossing and did the demographic work for that. And that's actually where we came to know of Dr. Gillespie's work. And additionally, he has worked with several school districts throughout the year on similar processes. So we look forward to hearing his report. This really branches off directly from what Jill just shared. So as part of the community engagement process, we were seeking more recent updated information on population trends in our school district and thought Dr. Gillespie would be the right one to help us with that. So he has prepared some preliminary results. One caution, so everyone understands, this is Stage Two work, and Jill did a nice job describing Stage Two. So this report tonight will not include specific grade-level projections by this many 12th graders by this year. It's more general than that, but I will leave it to Dr. Gillespie to explain that.
Thank you, Dave, and members of the Board. Again, my name is Tom Gillespie, and I am retired theoretically, but I still do some work that is interesting. My organization, my presentation tonight is to look a little bit at the historical trends in Hudson School District, and then focus in a little bit on the near-term future of enrollments over the next five years. Why five years? Because the children that will be in kindergarten are already here. So, you know, that's sort of the focus for five years. And then a longer-run projection of district population, not of enrollment, but district population over the next 25 years. And to give, basically, my primary conclusion is that Hudson School District enrollments and population will continue to grow. This is a growing area. It just is not going to grow as rapidly as was previously anticipated. And the reason for that is two very large, enormous, you know, almost earth-shattering kinds of changes that happened in our society in the last, middle and last part of last decade. One is that the birth rates fell with the recession. Birth rates always fall with the recession, and it didn't recover two or three years later. The thing that happened this time is, they haven't recovered. And this is true for Wisconsin, it is true for Minnesota, it is true of the Upper Midwest, it is true of the nation, that we seem to be now in, after 30 years, or more than 30 years of almost constant fertility rates, we now have moved to a regime that seems to be a lower long-run fertility rate. And what does this mean for the school? Well, it means that grades will be, starting with the earliest grades and then moving upward, that they will be about 10% to 15% smaller than was anticipated several years ago. And these are now, appear to be very much of a long-run trend. The other big trend that affected the Hudson School District, and again, it's also a national trend, the data here is for the Minneapolis-St. Paul metropolitan area, of which Hudson is a part. St. Croix County was one of the fastest-growing counties in the nation, listed among the 100 fastest-growing counties of the nation for many years during the '90s and the early part of last decade, along with several other counties in the Twin City metropolitan area. And then beginning in about 2005, 2006, we began to notice a break in that. This outward movement of people into areas like Hudson has been going on almost since World War II, pretty much unabated. And we began to see a break in that, starting in about 2005, 2006. Really accelerated with the recession, the housing market, the recession is what this is all about. And what happened was that by 2009, growth rates in the most rapidly-growing counties across the nation, not just here, but across the nation, collapsed. And in the Twin City metropolitan area, counties such as St. Croix are now growing at about the same rate as Hennepin and Ramsey County, which actually had been declining in population over a long period of time. The initial reaction to this was that this would be a short-run effect with the housing market, and once we began to recover from the recession and the housing market began to recover, that this would all become history and that we would move back to where we were before. And that doesn't seem to be happening right now. It is possible, it could still happen, but right now it appears that increasingly likely that this is a long-run trend. And if anybody wants to, you know, query me further about that, as to why this might be a long-run trend, I'd be happy to discuss this. If we look at enrollments in Hudson School, comparing the 2007 and '08 to the 2014-15 school year, we find that the lowest grades, kindergarten, first and second grade, are smaller now than they were back before the recession. Again, this is that birth rate effect. After five years, the child that's born this year will be your charge in five years. And so it becomes a regular process. The enrollments, particularly in grades three through 10, are larger, and then the enrollments in grades 11 and 12 are smaller. And if you look back at that birth chart, the births reached a low point in about 2007, I mean, in 1997, '98, and these are now your seniors in high school. And that was a low point for births. High school enrollments around the nation will begin to increase as that birth rate increased also. Hudson has, in the past, received children from migration. And if we look at a comparison of the cohort changes, comparing kindergarten to 12th grade 13 years later, that we find that the 12th-grade class was larger than that initial kindergarten enrollment class as students moved into the area and also transferred from non-public schools. That ratio, though, is diminishing somewhat over time. We're also seeing diminution in the grade progression ratios. Grade progression ratio is simply the relationship of the children in a particular grade this year compared to the previous year, previous grade last year. So for example, if you have 105 students in grade three this year and 100 students in grade two last year, the grade progression ratio would be 1.05. It's that simple of a concept. But it's a very useful concept for understanding how grades move over time. So if we look at using that grade progression ratio information, going, looking at trends back to 2000 and bringing them up to the present by individual grade, then we can look at enrollment projections. Again, this is enrollment projections. Over the next five years, these are very useful for staffing and budgeting kinds of analysis. And this chart presents the numbers, but perhaps the graph would be a little bit easier to see. What we anticipate over the next five years is the K through five enrollments to decline a bit, the middle school enrollments to increase a bit, and then begin to decline towards the end of 2019, 2020, the end of the five-year period, and high school enrollments to increase a bit over the next five years. If we look at the longer-run projection, looking at the next 25 years, the grade progression ratio doesn't, isn't the strongest way of doing that. An alternative way is using a demographic method called the cohort component method. But the problem is, is that this is a projection of population of school age, not of enrollment. And here we look individually at fertility, mortality, and migration assumptions, and these are consistent with the ones that we use for the Bridge Impact Study. Looking actually at three different models, Model One and Model Two result in very similar kinds of numbers, particularly after the bridge is completed. And Model Three results in a bit higher rate of growth over time. For the county, this would be, these are the lines that, you know, there is a difference that Model Three is a bit higher over time, but there's growth in all three models. Looking at Hudson School District specifically, as opposed to the county, again, this is a population, and it is school-age population, that we see trends over time in age groups. For example, we will likely see a bit of a drop-off in the zero-to-four population and then a rise, beginning really after about 2025, a rise to 2040. The school-age population, five to 19, is likely going to increase some, not an enormous increase, but there will also be wave effects in this trend over time. If we look at the elementary school age, five to nine in particular, that right now that is a declining population will level off at about 2025, and then after 2035 will begin to rise again. The age 10- to 14-year-old population will increase to 2020 and then drop off a bit after 2020. And then the 15- to 19-year-old population, now this includes some young people that are not in school, particularly some of the 18-year-olds and the 19-year-olds would, most would not be in school. And we're trying to obtain some data right now for specific age of students in the high school. But this would anticipate an increase in school-age population to 2025, consistent with what we are seeing throughout Wisconsin and Minnesota and the whole Upper Midwest as a trend, as the current high school class is at a bottom point, but is beginning to increase and then leveling off and experiencing some decline after that. Again, the main conclusion, we can look at individual age groups here, but the main conclusion is that the Hudson School District, I anticipate, will continue to grow, that the school-age population and enrollment will continue to grow, just not as rapidly as was previously anticipated. Let me stop there and see.
Do we have questions, comments from Board members?
Really monumental and not something that anyone could have seen coming. So it's great. I think it's good for us to have a lot of this, and it will help, you know, us as a Board be a lot smarter in terms of the options and the decisions that we're going to be looking at going forward. So, Tom, appreciate the work and effort that you put into it thus far. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
On the slide that you have, that is the Slide Five, the kindergarten cohort growth, the one that goes from 1999 to 2003? Is there not information available to you or to us that is more current than this span of time? I mean, could you have not gone from 2003 to 2014? So we could see the cohort growth that we've been dealing with for the last 10 years?
These are the children that were in kindergarten in 2003, so advancing that 12 years is they are seniors in high school this year.
Okay, so this is kindergarten...
Kindergarten.
These are the kindergarten... Oh, this is not from, they were in kindergarten in 1999, and now they're in 2003, they were in high school?
Yes. The dates there are the year that they entered kindergarten.
Okay, okay. So this isn't the spread from that?
No.
All right, all right. Thank you. That answers that question.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Gillespie? Tom, I want to thank you for your work. I know that you, you know, had done some work for the county and looked at the bridge and the impact of the bridge. And so, you know, that's why we asked you to look at Hudson School District, and I appreciate the time that you've put into it. And we'll continue to watch that. And any other comments?
Just one last comment. Belle, I'm sorry, I'm prolonging the meeting here. You know, I think it's important for us as a community to really come to a number that we're all comfortable with, you know? And I think that's real critical here and one of the reasons why we're doing this. You know, we really, I think as a process steward committee and team, has really been to make sure that we're getting something that's consistent and that everyone can agree on, so that doesn't become a topic of focus for any discussion later on. You know, hopefully, as a Board, we can get to something that we're all comfortable with as a collective team and as a community, that we come together and agree on the numbers that, you know, we're going to look at in terms of making the best decisions for our community and for our kids moving forward. So hopefully, this is a great start to that.
Just to follow up to that, Mr. President, part of the discussion from the Facilities Committee meeting, you know, really, it should be, we should be aware also at the same time that, you know, we're talking about two dynamics here. One is scope, how much, how big, and one is functionality. We have old schools that don't perform as they are now, and even if we... We have, we have old schools that don't perform as they are now, and even if we remained steady in our growth, we'd still have old schools that don't perform and function in a manner in which we need to have them function in today's education and what we've put, we put forward in HSD 2025. So just, you know, well, my concern is, is that the implication out there is going to be, oh, look, we don't need to build because we don't have, we're not going to have the kind of growth we've had before. Well, you know, maybe the scope has changed, but, but the functions of the, the kind of facilities that we're going to require has to change, in my opinion.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Is, has, is there any talk on the process stewards committee about how to, how to get this information to the public? Because we've been operating on Hazel Reinhardt's projections, which obviously have been way off, and that is no fault of hers, it just has to do with what happened in 2007. So now we're, we're way under what we've been operating on all these years. How do we now get this information to the public so that they understand that our figures are now starkly different than what our projection figures have been?
That's why Dr. Gillespie's here tonight. I'm assuming that this information is going to be posted at some point, you know, on the website, and probably the newspaper might want to do an article about it, but I don't know beyond that, what, what else do you want us to do?
Okay, I was just wondering how it was going to be relayed to the public.
Okay, well, there's, yeah, it's being made public now and, yeah.
Yeah, Mr. President, the, the other thing, Sandy, I, I think this information will likely inform stage three. So when we move on to stage three, the information here will definitely be available to the community, will help inform that process.
That will help, thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Finally, we get to citizens' request to speak about non-action items, and I was given a request. We have a gentleman who's not currently from the school district, but from the greater school district, at least formerly was in the school district, and I want to come forward. Michael Waterman, if you read your newspaper and everything, has been recently appointed judge here in St. Croix County. Mike was a resident in North Hudson, lived in the school district previously, now lives in New Richmond, and you just wanted to introduce yourself to the board and to the school district.
Yes, thank you. Is this on? Can you hear me okay? Okay, thank you. That was my, my main purpose tonight was to come and introduce myself and say hello. Governor Walker appointed me the new judge on Friday afternoon, and it's been quite a whirlwind since then. But I am now filling out a term, actually filling a partial term for a judge who has just retired, his name is Howard Cameron. And when there's a judge retiring midterm, the governor gets to appoint, and there is a very rigorous application process, and I went through that, and he selected me. I'm very grateful for that opportunity. As the president had indicated, I'm originally from, or spent a lot of my time in North Hudson, I lived there for about 12 years, and six years ago, my wife and I moved out of the Hudson School District and into the New Richmond School District. We live in Somerset Township now. I work in Hudson, I worked for the same firm for 20 years, same firm since my graduation. And a lot of people have asked me, well, why do you want to become judge after 20 years of private practice? Why would you want to become judge? And the answer is quite simple, it's, it's for public service, and I truly mean that. When I was growing up, I was taught to do good in school, and then as I got older, go out and get a good job. And then I've learned too, that public service is important, and that completes a person's career. And for a lawyer, public service at the highest level is a judge. And I wanted to dedicate my 20 years of experience as a lawyer, my education, and I think my common sense, ground common sense, for the betterment of the greater St. Croix community for all the people within it. So that was the, the main purpose for coming tonight, was just to say hi and, and say a few words. But I'll leave you with this, if you ever need a speaker in any of your schools, I am more than happy to come in and talk. I love education, I actually am a part-time, what they call adjunct professor of law at Willie Mitchell School of Law in St. Paul, so I lecture to law students there, and I love teaching and would just love the opportunity to come and speak to your students. So, thank you very much, and if you happen to see me around town, just grab me aside and say hello, I'd like to talk to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. We have no other requests to speak than any board or administrator comments. Hearing none, we'll move on to topics for action. And I guess this has got my name next to it, but it really could have the whole board because the whole board participated in this, and we're very, very pleased to announce that our new superintendent, Nick Olet, Dr. Olet has been superintendent down in Iowa. There's a whole media release, is that up on the board, or, I, I guess? This is a process that, when Mary announced her retirement in November, we hired a consulting firm in December, and this was advertised, really was a nationwide search. My understanding was that we had over 30 applicants and then also people who were recruited to apply, because we had a process that was several weeks in which we got community input, and that was consultant-led, and they did a very good job, meeting with community members to come up with a profile on the qualities. And there was a checklist, the board participated in this, I think staff did as well, and as well as the community as a whole, there was over four dozen qualities or characteristics you could find in a superintendent. And to narrow that down to 10, it ended up being pretty clear that there was across the different cross-sections of people who completed the survey as to what those 10 qualities were, and Dr. Olet, and speaking for the rest of the board, I'm sure we'll have other comments, seemed to, you know, be directly in line with those 10 characteristics and attributes we're looking for in our next superintendent. So we're very pleased to announce that, and this is our first topic action would be to approve his contract, but I'll open it up to other board members for their comments.
Mr. President, just, just a follow-up, I think it's important for the community to know two things. One is that there were, there were very good qualified candidates for this position, and so I think that's a tribute to the research, the search firm, but it's also a tribute to this district to attract that many qualified candidates, quality candidates. I think the second thing I'd like the community to know is that, and I'll take some liberty with this, Lynn, but it was a unanimous decision by our board, so, to select Dr. Olet. And so we're excited about his position and his coming on, I think, and I, I won't speak, I'm assuming I'm speaking for the board now, excited about his, his taking on this position and furthering the good work that this district has taken, has brought it to at this point.
Yes, we, we spent, what, lots of hours. I mean, we spent the whole Saturday narrowing the field from six to three, started at, we were there from 7:30 in the morning till four in the afternoon, and then, you know, spending basically three hours each of the next, for each of the finalists, so I don't know, whatever that adds up to, it's a lot of hours, pouring through the different resumes, the applications, and the recommendations, doing the background checks and everything. And it was, at, at the end, as we were coming to our choice, it was great to have that unanimity on the board and the genuine excitement in the room, which is a little dulled right now because we're in our second hour of our, coming towards the second hour of our meeting. But does anybody else want to comment? I mean, what I've been told, when I went through my school board training, I've only been on the board two years, these guys are nine-year veterans here next to me, is that it's probably one of the most important things that a school board will ever do is hire their superintendent. And the other thing that folks in this district may not be aware of is, we've been extremely lucky to have long-term tenure superintendents. The industry average is about 3.8 years, and there are some school districts not too far from here that are on their fourth superintendent in five years. That's, that kind of turnover cannot be good for achievement, and so we're hopeful that we have a nice long tenure with Nick Olet, so.
Mr. President, I, I would just like to compliment the company that we hired to handle this process for us. I, that's my first experience with dealing with that type of company, to hire somebody of this, in this type of position, and I thought they did a great job. They were very thorough, they directed us, helped us, gave us advice, were with us all the way, brought us great candidates, and a lot of them, they were all well-qualified. And I'm, I'm very excited to have Dr. Olet with us. I'm actually grateful that I got re-elected for three more years, I get to work with this man, so I'm excited about that, and I'm looking forward to the opportunity. And it was unanimous. After a couple of hours of discussion, we all came together, there was excitement in the room, and we were all on the same page. That doesn't happen all the time, but it did with, with this decision, it was unanimous.
Yes. Carrie?
As you've both alluded, we were at a fever pitch that night, but also we would be remiss not to thank Andrea's work on this as well, she was instrumental from the very beginning and went above and beyond in her service to the candidates and to us. So thank you, Andrea.
Yes, thank you.
She might even have a second calling.
Yeah, hopefully we're not doing this again anytime soon.
A second career.
Well, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract.
One more real quick comment.
All right, sure.
The other thing that I think was fun in the, in the discussion, because it was fun, I mean, we had a good time going through the, the entire day and through the whole process, and then finally culminating to come up with a decision, it was a blast. But the other thing that was, was very apparent amongst the board was the, how proud we are of the rest of the administrative team and the teachers and the staff that we have in this district. I mean, it was so clear within the board that that was something that just gave us all a lot of comfort in the decision as well, because we know that Dr. Olet will be surrounded by a lot of awesome people, but we also think that his leadership and guidance and energy is going to, you know, bring some, some fun here as well and continue the amazing work that we've done academically and that Mary's led over the years. So that also should not be missed in terms of how proud and, and excited we are to have the rest of the staff here in this district. So thank you all for your continued commitment and dedication.
Lynn, did you want to say something?
Mr. President, I just wanted to expound on a comment that Tom made because, and I also want to thank my fellow board members for their work. I was on a scheduled family vacation during, when the board took on the real meat of the work of selecting the superintendent candidate, so I was not there actually to make the vote, but had I had the opportunity, I would have been thrilled to make that vote as well. So I just want to thank my fellow board members for carrying that work through, and I'm sorry I missed the process.
Well, but you were there to help us select the semifinalists, so that was, that was good. All right, is there a motion?
Mr. President, move to approve the, the contract between the Board of Education and the school district of Hudson and Nicholas Olet Superintendent.
Second.
Motion by Brian, second by Sandy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, it's unanimous, and Dr. Olet, would you come forward, please? Let's congratulate Dr. Olet as our new superintendent. Or you can have a seat up here, either one.
No, I, I can, I can talk standing, that's just fine. First of all, I want to say, I want to say thank you for this opportunity. One of the things that was so unique about this, they kind of just sealed, not sealed the deal, but really just really embraced things, is when we got that call Monday night, and Jamie said, hey, I want to put you on speakerphone, and then he said, make sure Julie's on speakerphone too, my wife Julie. And it just made us feel so good as far as coming to a place that cares as much about me as, as it does my family, and I think one of the comments from one of the board members to my wife was, Julie, as excited as we are to have Nick in the district, we're equally excited to have you and your family. And that really stood out with me, I can't tell you how many people I've shared that with over the last couple of weeks, it's just, just a huge thing. We could not be more excited to be a part of these, of this district and working to, to build upon some of the great things that are, that are going on. Mary has been just absolutely outstanding through the transition up to this point. With all of those things, I've had the opportunity then to hire the, the new middle school principal. And so it's kind of a unique experience in that process. We had some outstanding candidates, we had great, very strong candidates to, to consider, was able to get tons of feedback from staff, from administrative team, you know, kind of go through all those different components, and I couldn't be more excited, as much as I am about getting the job, as I am to offer the job and, and recommend the, the hiring of, of Ann Mitchell to be the next middle school principal. And so just very excited with that, and it's been just a great process. I know it adds a whole other opening in the district now at Holton, which adds to some more transition fund for me and, and for Mary. But, but it has been a great process, and like I said, the, excited to be here, but just as excited, if not more excited, to have the opportunity to recommend Ann as our next middle school principal, because I think she'll do an outstanding job, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Excellent. Well, and with that, that's your first official unofficial report as a superintendent. With that recommendation, I guess I would entertain a motion then to approve our second action item, unless there's some, any further introduction that's needed from administration. But Dr. Olet, having participated in that process, makes the recommendation. Bruce?
Just a real quick comment, you know, was happy to get the call and hear, hear the news, I, having children go through the Holton school system, Ethan said yes, he was so excited. Andrew, not as excited, because, you know, he's saying, well, what's going to happen to me? So very happy to see this news. I know how much you care about the teachers, the kids, and how you make a real strong effort to connect with all the families up in the Holton area, and know that you'll carry that over to the middle school, so proud of you and happy for you as well. So nice job. Thanks for your commitment at Holton.
Mr. President, when I got the news, I shared and actually emailed Ann and said, you know, as a parent, I'm very, very sad to see you leave Holton, because I watched her walk into a kind of a challenging situation, and she did an amazing job of winning the love of those parents, students, teachers, and one of the things that I think is a strength of Mrs. Mitchell that I really appreciate is, she has an amazing talent to draw out people who might like to stay in the shadows and not get involved, and she does an amazing job of getting people involved who maybe are happier, just kind of being quiet or watching the process. And I, I watched her do that with students, I've watched her do that with parents, and I really appreciate that. So as a parent, I'm, was very sad to hear the news, as a school board member, I was elated, so congratulations, and I think you'll do an amazing job.
Any other comments?
Just a final comment, I'm, I'm just appreciate the fact that this district looks internally, you know, for us, for qualified candidates, I think that's a good practice for us and for any company, as a matter of fact. So I know that there are good quality candidates out there, and I, I congratulate, assuming that we vote you in, congratulate Mrs. Mitchell. I think that's a pretty good assumption.
Well, just to kind of build on Tom's comments and Bruce and Lynn, is that I think this is what we want to do, is we want to show our staff and that hard work pays off, and, and has exhibited excellence at the Holton School in promoting academic excellence. I'm just excited to be able to continue the tradition that we've had at the middle school with Dan Cook, had a long tenure there, and I think moving forward, we got, again, a lot of the pieces are in place, the right pieces are in place, and so I think that this is a just and due deserved reward, so. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve the new contract for the Hudson Middle School Principal, Ann Mitchell.
Second.
Motion by Lynn, second by Bruce. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Onto item C. Oh, I guess I'm going to fly through this now, but she was sweating through the vote there, so we'll, we'll let her make a few comments here.
Thank you for your kind words, and I, I think it's going to be easy to fill Holton, it's a dream team out there, it made it tough to make the decision, but I'm really looking forward to working with our middle-level educators and our middle-level learners and learning from Dan Coke and his excellent team. So thank you for your So, thank you for your kind words.
All right. Looking forward to working with you. Mary, Mary would like to make a comment.
Well, certainly, congratulations to Ann, and it was a wise choice by our incoming Superintendent, Dr. Olet. And as I think about middle school students and staff, they certainly will benefit from Ann's leadership in the years to come. So, and parents as well and families. So, with that, Dr. Olet and I have had conversation this afternoon. He spent two days so far in the district. It's been focused on new staff, so certainly the selection of the middle school principal. And then we started to talk about Holton and the next steps. So, in the next few days, we'll have that flushed out. Dr. Olet's going to work on that and send it to me, and then we'll have some more conversation. And then we'll start posting the position and move forward so that he can make that selection.
All right. Action item 8C, resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of not to exceed $8 million for general obligation bonds. And this is going to be probably good news, I hear, so.
I'm going to actually just turn it over to Tim, because we have a guest that's here to speak, so.
All right.
Thanks, Lynn. Yeah, so this, yeah, the big number, $8 million. So, what we're doing is refinancing some 2007 bonds, and you've seen information, and Brian Brewer is here tonight again, and you heard Brian and Brian give a presentation on the opportunity at the March work session. And then the Finance Committee did have a chance to review a little bit different resolution, parameters resolution. So, what it does is allows the current President and Treasurer to act on the bond sale, and the objective there is to get the best interest rate possible. There are some parameters in that, criteria in that resolution that would be followed in that purchase of the, or in the sale process, in the sale of the bonds. And one of the things is that they would have a, the bonds would have an interest rate not to exceed 3%. That was set as an objective, and then the refunding would provide a present value of debt service of at least 3%. So, those are the main criteria, and so what that 3% means is the potential gross savings from the refinancing will be somewhere around $600,000, and the present value savings is over $550,000. So, it's well, actually well above the 3% at this point. Brian will update you a little bit on what the markets have been doing. But, and then also Barrett's fee, when we had discussed this at the work session, it was at 0.7. Brian and I have talked, and Barrett has agreed to reduce that to 0.6%. So, with that, Brian, I'll let you, if you have any additional comments. Otherwise, you could go ahead and just approve the resolution, too.
The only thing I would, good evening, good to see everyone. The only thing I would add is that from the meeting, March 30th, until now, so only two weeks, interest rates have moved lower during that time period, because there was a jobs report. The April jobs report was lower than was forecasted and revised the previous month's lower, which then makes people that project the timing of when the Federal Reserve would start taking actions to raise rates, pushing it further into 2015. So, what that's translated into is so far, interest rates have moved lower by about 0.2%, which is good for what you're looking to do. And right now, the savings estimate, as Tim indicated, at the end of March, we were looking at about $600,000 gross savings and about $550,000 present value. Right now, we're a little over $700,000 gross savings and over $600,000 present value. So, one of the reasons we're utilizing the parameter resolution is typically, the way you would normally go about this is you would tonight say, "I understand, I get it, bring it back for an action at a regular board meeting." Because of the sensitivity of how quickly things can change in the market. What the parameter resolution allows you to do is authorize the President and Treasurer to, once Tim and I have all of the documentation finalized and ready to go, if that is in-between meetings, to go ahead and lock in, should we achieve those parameters that are set forth in the resolution. So, that's the main reason for utilizing it, is because of how sensitive the savings are to movements in the market. And if we can get things lined up, which is what we're on track for, ideally by the end of April, trying to get you in position to lock in those rates, that would be the goal.
And so, this could happen before our next meeting on May 12th?
Correct. Ideally, that's what we're, dude, rates would have to have changed if we weren't doing that, yes.
Yeah, it's going in the right direction, and so we don't want to
Correct.
Wait too long.
So, if we approve this now, can you run right out of here to the phone and lock it in right now?
Unfortunately, it doesn't.
I mean, like instantly?
Right. Unfortunately, it doesn't work exactly like that. We're developing a prospectus, which is called an official statement. It discloses everything about the district. Tim and I will get on a credit rating call next, early next week to have the Moody's Investor Service reassign a credit rating to the district. Right now, for those of you that have been on the board, last summer, we went through this process when the district refinanced some other debt and saved over $500,000 of savings at that point. You were assigned the AA1 category, which is the one notch from the highest. And so, the expectation is that we will have an affirmation of that, but that's the process. So, there are a few steps between now and being able to pick up the phone and lock it in.
I know that. I really do know the process. I would just, I can always be a wishful thinker, you know, positive thinking that we could get it like right now, tonight.
Yes.
But I know you'll do the best, and you'll get it done as fast as you can. We'll get the best rates you can get for us. So, thank you.
And I think we covered this last time. You saved us half a mil, or half a million dollars, was the bond rating. The only thing preventing us from getting the highest is the percentage of our taxable base that's commercial. Is that what?
Correct. The economic tax base, the size of it, at 3.4 billion, relative to other AAA rated, which is the only notch higher than your AA1. That's a relatively small tax base size. The wealth levels, the demographics, those are all strong, but as you pointed out, it's not only the size of it, but it's the reliance on residential and commercial versus industrial, which, again, you know, that's a choice in community, and it's also outside of the scope of the school board as to what's permitted.
Yeah, we don't have control over that.
Correct. Yes.
But what we do have control over is being able to take advantage of these interest rates, save our taxpayers some money. So, do I have a motion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Move to authorize the issuance and sale of not to exceed $8 million general obligation refunding bonds.
Second.
Okay.
Again.
All right. I guess Sandy's going to defer to Bruce, let him have the second. All right, on Brian's motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Thank you, Brian, for saving us more money again.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you, Brian and Tom, for the nine years of working together with you as well. I've appreciated the back and forth with you during meetings as well, so congratulations on your time on the board.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you for your personal service, too. We appreciate you coming up here, so.
You're welcome. I appreciate the ability to work with the district, and I look forward to continuing that.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay, item 8B. We're all the way down to H this month. That's a lot of action items, but we have 2015-16 final staffing recommendation. Names next to this would be Tom Holland as Personnel Committee Chair and Andrea Volker.
I'll just quickly turn this over to Andrea. This is just basically just a review of our, it's a management process of understanding what the needs are in the district for staffing, making some changes, some adjustments. It's virtually negligible in the budget. So, Andrea, do you want to explain details in that?
Sure. Thank you, Tom. So, we did have preliminary discussion at the board work session in March with the full board, talking about some general preliminary administrative recommendations in terms of 15-16 staffing in light of the budgetary concerns that we're facing. After that, we did additional analysis and presented to Personnel Committee the information presented up above, and there was consensus to move it forward here tonight. And you can see, I won't go through all the great detail of the spreadsheet, but highlighting a couple areas is that where it's a constant analysis at the, during the course of any particular year, about where we can look for reallocations, increased efficiencies, and then also our biggest staffing needs. And so, you see a balance of that in this document tonight. As Tom also indicated, the total estimated increase to our staffing for 15-16 is $10,505. $8,000 of that is a result of a 0.2 increase of custodian position because of the expansion of the lunchroom to include another area with tiled floors. So, that's $8,000 of the $10,000. So, our total proposal tonight, again, is $10,505.
I know that Personnel dealt with this, probably Finance as well.
Personnel specifically dealt with it, yes, and had consensus to move it here.
All right. Anything more on this?
I just wanted to add that certainly this staffing request is out of sensitivity based on the budget proposal before the legislature at the present time, and certainly our taxpayers. But it doesn't represent all of the needs that we have in the district to support students and their learning, and I know the board knows that because we've talked about that, but I wanted to state that publicly, that if we were in a different situation, looking at, forward to our budget, we would be having other recommendations that had been requested.
Move to accept the...
Excuse me, we did have one other piece to this.
Okay.
Pardon me?
We do have one other piece to the staffing.
Right.
Yeah, and it was the piece that, again, Personnel did review this. There's an opportunity in Nutrition Services to do a little bit of restructuring, and, Tim, I think you can, if you go to the next page, that's up there. And so, in looking at the needs in the department, we've had a need for restructurings that occurred due to several factors. We've had large increases in student medical diets. The National School Meals Program increase in regulation and complexity has really accelerated over the past five years, and we've had additional legislation that's expanded the program's scope without corresponding support. And there are other reasons, training, mandatory trainings, those types of things. But the overall plan would be, as Peggy Eller has looked at the needs in the department, would be to restructure, which would result in the elimination of the site slash office manager position. That would be through attrition in the department, and then add an Assistant Department Manager. And that structure would provide the depth of knowledge and support to meet needs of students, while at the same time continuing a portion of some annual savings that we've derived over the past number of years. So, as you look at that sheet, you can see the cost savings from eliminating that office site manager position. And then we've had some previous savings annually for a dietitian contract. Prior, we used to contract services for dietitian duties, and we haven't had to do that for several years, so. And then adding that Assistant Department Manager position is about $45,000. So, we're still rolling forward some savings, substantial savings, but we've got some needs in the department, which would, you know, this is certainly an opportunity to do that.
This is all self-supported through the, this isn't from the general fund. Maybe we should let everybody know that.
Yeah, that's a good point, Sandy. This is paid for by primarily user fees through Nutrition Services.
Where's the slide that was shown under Andrea's? That comes out of the general.
Right. Andrea's is General Fund and Special Education Fund, so.
But this one, going forward then, would mean a few more dollars, but it's, involves the restructuring, and in the end, it's going to be supported by user fees anyway.
That's right, yeah. And I'd add, too, you know, in looking at our school lunch pricing structure, it's one of the lower in the region, so that's certainly good news, and we don't anticipate this change to cause that to go up. We do have to, we do, we are, however, under rules to increase prices over the next several years, so, and many of you have heard that portion before, so.
Okay. Now, are we ready for a motion?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Okay. I move to accept both of these recommendations for the final staffing.
Second.
Motion by Sandy, second by Lynn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Next up, we have Lynn, again, on health and dental insurance plan rates, with help from Tim.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met and looked at the last nine months of financial performance of our health and dental insurance plan and endorsed the new plan rates for 2015-16 that Tim will be reviewing.
Okay, thank you. This is our, this is our second year being self-funded in health insurance and dental insurance, and our numbers overall for this year are looking, looking good. We've had favorable claims experience, and you can see on the chart up there. I won't get into a lot of detail, but it looks at all costs to operate our self-funded health insurance plan. And so, currently, we're running a ratio of about 84% on the plan funding versus the claims. Those numbers do jump around. So far this year, the numbers are under 100%. Last year, if we looked at some of those months, you might see some months that are running 150%, but overall, at this point, we're doing well. The, some of the fees that are included in there, there's transitional reinsurance fees. One of the, one of the advantages, and it certainly wasn't the reason we moved over to self-funding, but one of the advantages of that is we avoided about $150,000 of Affordable Care Act taxes that are taxed on premiums if you're fully insured. So, that's more of an ancillary savings, which is, which is nice to have as we, as we look at our plan. The next slide has information on our plan, dental plan, which is funded by, which is self-funded, and the third-party administrator for that is Delta Dental. Again, running about 93% claims versus plan funding, so, again, the numbers are looking pretty good there. Then moving on to the recommendation, just a little point, a point of reference, the national medical cost trend is 7.3%. That's, that was put together by Gallagher Benefit. They project out some of the, the medical cost inflation. And so, we'd propose the internal rate, equivalency rate for health insurance go up 3% this year, and we'd propose that dental go up 2%. And so, that's reversing a 7.3% increase. So, again, last year, we had pretty low increases in the single digits as well. So far, so good. And the expense to the district, it's different than paying that premium, but the expense to the district is really the claims and then the stop-loss insurance and administrative fees. Those are the expenses to the district, so it's claims, really claims-driven. So, any questions?
Any questions from any of the board members?
No.
Before you fall asleep, could we have a motion to approve then?
Mr. President, move to approve the 2015-16 health and dental insurance plan rates.
Second.
Motion by Lynn, second by Bruce. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Now, we move on to HSD, Modified One-to-One Technology Implementation Plan. Brian, this is your area.
Yeah, we met in Finance to talk about just the potential budget challenges we're going to have next year. One area we're looking at to modify our plan based on that is the One-to-One Technology Plan, which is the Chromebooks we give to two grade levels right now. So, we're still going to keep expanding the program. We're just going to do a slightly slower rate, which will also help us to make sure that we have the right support for the, for the teachers and staff as we implement the plan. So, I'll just have David kind of go over the details there, so.
Thank you very much. So, yeah, real briefly, as you recall, we rolled out our One-to-One Initiative a few years ago, and I'm going to speak quickly so I can keep Mr. President awake over there. But we have a solid plan in place, and I'd be remiss not to mention the fact that we had a presentation just, just a while ago from some teachers and students at the middle school. We're very proud of the success, proud of the work they've done, and want to continue it. What we recognize, though, is that obviously, given the budget situation, we need to try to find some dollars, and this is a relatively big-ticket item where we can have an impact. So, the plan would be to, instead of rolling out to seventh and eighth graders next year, just roll out to seventh graders, and then also the students in the academies will continue to support that program as well. to support that program as well. And by doing that, by slowing that, that rollout down, we can save $138,000. As Brian mentioned, the success of this program has very little to do with the devices. It has more to do with the passion of the students, empowering the students and the teachers through technology, and we want to keep that going, but we do need to look at support plans that can sustain that growth through time. So, the recommendation would be to slow that down to one grade next year, and then hopefully return to two grade levels per year if the budget allows.
Okay. That was a good succinct explanation, all right.
This was supported by the Finance Committee, so, I mean, by the Learning Program Development Committee, sorry, Lynn.
One quick question?
Yes.
So, how is it going to impact the classes that, you know, for instance, may have seniors and juniors in them? If you look at like, you know, you do 10th and 11th, and then 12th grade the last year, is there going to be any impact to, you know, the kids and who will be on devices, who's not on devices, et cetera?
That's a good question. You know, really, that impact would have been felt at some point. This will change that. So, we do have the last year of the traditional, or the original rollout would have had 11th and 12th graders together. This will delay that once, assuming, again, that we can go back to two grade levels per year. If that were the case, then yes, the 12th grade would be receiving those devices a different year, but there's also an infusion of technology that happens just naturally through the course of, through the course of the recycling of devices and so forth.
Yep.
That is something we'll have to plan for. We also have to plan for the fact that we would likely roll up with the academy now that the students in the STEM Plus and the Healthcare Academy will be extended into the junior year, we'll be supporting that as well. So, there are things we need to watch to make sure that we don't have an awkward situation where we have most of a class with devices. We might have to supplement at a classroom level at that point.
Yeah, and you still have the ability to bring your own device.
That is, yeah, absolutely. Yep, good point.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move approval of the modified rollout plan for, as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other comments on approving this? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And the modified plan saves us, what did you say, $138,000 for next year?
That is correct.
Okay. Is approved. So, item 8G, we have a new policy, and as our procedure is for modification of existing policy, generally find those under consent items, but this is under topics for action. So, Brian, this is your name next to it on student assessment.
Yeah, I'm just going to move right over to Sandy for this, so.
Thank you, thank you. This is a new policy which is required, and the policy provides a general overview of our assessment program. You're aware of several of the assessments that we use in the district from the various reports that come to the board. So, some of the large-scale assessments like ACT or the Measures of Academic Progress that provide us some national comparative data, to the state assessments, as well as some local assessments that are often used for our SMAR goals, such as some of the reading and math assessments that we use. So, in general, it provides a broad overview of our program, and then some areas I want to note is just that we're very focused, then, on the purpose of assessment, which is want to know our students. That's our, that's our top priority. We want to know our students so that we can make decisions to guide instruction and to also report progress. And the assessment data is used, then, for various things such as curriculum development, establishing district goals, allocating resources, as well as developing interventions that are used in the classroom. And then, I just want to end with just taking note that we do very much value student privacy, and so that we do meet the letter of the law when it comes to that, to the privacy, and that we legally protect student records so that they're not disclosed, except for what's permissible by law. And often, that means in large scale. So, usually, when I come, I talk about third graders as a whole group, how that is. I don't get down to the individual, individual data. Thank you.
Any questions for Sandy? I mean, I understand, you said that this is a policy mandated by law, that we have this policy.
Correct.
It was reviewed by Learning Program Development.
And Learning and Program Development already approved it. Whether it's required by law or not, I think it's a good idea to have a policy that says we're using assessments and having purpose for those assessments, not just doing assessments for the sake of testing, so. All right. Although, is there a motion to approve? Brian?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. We now are, come to consent items. Unless there's a motion to pull anything out of consent, I would entertain a motion with the wording including the spending.
Mr. President, I'd like to move the approval of the consent items and that the Director of Financial Services be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $2,98,497.19.
Is there a second?
Second.
That's your last second there, Brian. All right. Motion by Lynn, second by Brian. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. And when this brings us to committee reports, and in looking at the committee report agendas, we've basically covered everything already in tonight, so I would dispense with the reading of the committee reports unless our retiring board members really want us to go through those item by item.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. With that, then we'll entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session.
Mr. President, make a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.85, parent 1, parent C, for preliminary and final consideration of non-renewal of certified staff.
Second.
Okay, we'll start with Carrie on roll call vote.
Whitaker, aye.
Hanson, aye.
Robson, aye.
Johnson, aye.
Bell, aye.
Holland, aye.
Berkey, aye.
All right, we are now adjourned to closed session.